Hey, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October fourteenth Regular Meeting of Council. I would like to call the meeting to order at five thirty-one P M. I would like to call on Counselor Dorn Boss to read the land and fill out the receipts.
I would like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of San Andreas is located on Treaty One territory. It's official last National, I mean, Cree, Ojinfree, Dakota, Danny Peoples, and the National Hallman of the Red River Metis. We respect the spirit and intent of trees in treaty-making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and collaboration.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Be it resolved that council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of the following items. Oh, there are none. As presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dorn Boss, seconded. Counselor Schlecker. All in favor? Anonymous, that is carried. First item we have. The planning portion starts, item four. So the first item is four point one. It's subdivision. It's a non-public hearing. Subdivision number S twenty-five, three, one, one, three, fifty-four, sixty-eight, P T H number nine. Ms. Esmond, could you proceed, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me share my screen. So this is a subdivision application, S twenty-five, three, one, one, three, located on fifty-four, sixty-eight, P T H nine. And purpose of that application is subdivide the subject land of five point forty-two acres into one additional lot. Here we can see a location map of the subject property. And subdivision application map from the applicant with proposed two lots. As per zoning bylaw of San Andreas, all lots in that area are supposed to be one point three acres big and a hundred ninety-eight feet wide. Both lots are coming in compliance to the zoning bylaw. And our analysis here that proposed subdivision located in our rural residential zone and designated as G D general development. As per SAM, the main dwelling and shop are placed closer than required setbacks and each accessory structure is bigger than a maximum, as was allowed it. Before, the applicant applied for the variance to bring the entire property into compliance. And the proposed subdivision meets the policies in rural residential zoning and development plan in G D zone. So we're going to recommend it to be approved with the conditions. And the conditions are, first, an applicant owner submits confirmation right in front of the municipality stating that taxes and the land to be subdivided plus any areas have been paid. Payment of the administration fee and service deposit required is for zoning bylaw also been paid. The second applicant owner entering to development agreement with the municipality stating and addressing included but not limited into dwelling on the existing lot shall be acquired to connect in municipal sewer. Payment of the capital development leaves, any other standard deemed by municipality too. And applicant owner to obtain all required variances, a side yard, setbacks, core unit areas, and combined floor area. And applicant owner to submit written confirmation from Manitoba is part culture and heritage that a heritage resources impact assessment has been completed. And the fifth condition, the owner obtains a permit from Manitoba Transportation and Infrastructure for relocation of the existing access to P H nine. And applicant owner submits written confirmation from Manitoba Hydro about the cement agreements that they're supposed to enter with. That's all that I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Uh, well, Warren Scrimita, you're the applicant. Do you have anything to add to the comments by the planner?
I do.
Council members, do you have any questions of the applicant? Okay, hearing and seeing them already the resolution. Where is the applicant owner of tax rule number two, seven, nine, zero, zero, has made application for subdivision S twenty-five, three, one, one, three, for the premises described as fifty-four, sixty-eight, P T H number nine. Now therefore, be it resolved, that's, oh, the purpose is to subdivide the subject land of five point four-two acres into one additional lot. No new road proposed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the subdivision application number S twenty-five, three, one, one, three, be hereby approved by council with the following conditions. And the conditions were all read out by the planner and on the screen. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dorn Boss, seconded by Deputy Mayor Morecki. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous. It's carried.
Thank you.
Next item is the public hearings. Open the public hearings. So welcome, everyone, to the public hearing process opportunity. The hearings will proceed as follows. Red River Planning staff will present the application. The applicant will make a presentation on the application. Those registered in support will follow, then those opposed will follow after that. The applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to comments or concerns raised by council or presenters. At the end of each presentation, council may ask for clarification but will not enter into debate. Please note, all person speaking must address the chair one at a time. You will be called upon. And discussion, oh, at the end of the presentations, council will close the public hearing. And then resolutions will be read for each matter and discussion will be amongst council members, not the audience. So thank you. We will now proceed. First item is conditional use number forty-four, two, oh, two, five, two, fifty-three, Hay Avenue. Ms. Esmond, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yes, this is a conditional use application, C U forty-four, twenty, twenty-five, located on two hundred and fifty-three Hay Avenue. And the purpose of that application is to continue to repair, maintain, and park personal farm equipment, trucks, and antique vehicles classified as any other agriculture use not listed in this table on the subject property. Okay, as per zoning bylaw of San Andreas in A R Agriculture Restricted Zone, those uses are not listed as permitted but conditional and we're gonna name it, we're gonna, yeah, ask for the permission for it by any other agricultural use. And they're proposing repair, maintenance, and parking of the personal far equipment, trucks, and antique vehicles too. Here we can see a location, a location map of the proposed subject property and some site plan from the applicant locating the shop for the conditional use and the conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the R P D recommends the following conditions. This conditional use is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new conditional use approval. Applicant owner obtains all required permits from our R P D and municipality if required. Hours of operation shall be limited to ten to seven, ten A M to seven P M. Exterior storage of vehicles, equipment, or materials associated with operation must be fully enclosed with a privacy fencing. And all vehicles parking associated with operation included but not limited to storage, equipment, trucks, and trailers must be contained on-site and must comply with the R M of San Andreas zoning bylaw. This condition does not restrict personal vehicles for residential purpose. No parking shall be permitted on Hay Avenue. And applicant owner shall be responsible for the cleanup of any debris along roadways resulting from the operation to the satisfaction of R M of San Andreas. And applicant owner shall maintain the site and adjacent areas in a clean and orderly manner such that it does not become unsightly. And applicant owner shall obtain a lot-grade permit from municipality prior to the construction of a dwelling. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you. I just realized that. I forgot to open the public hearing. Please, the lawyer can't just do it now, are we here, Miss? Let me come soon. Okay. Be resolved that council hereby open the public hearings to the following planning applications scheduled for October fourteenth at five thirty. Conditional use number forty-four, two, oh, two, five, forty-five, two, oh, two, five, forty-nine, two, oh, two, five, seventy, two, oh, two, five, ninety-seven, two, oh, two, five, one hundred, one, oh, one, one, oh, two, and one, oh, three, two, oh, two, five. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Mander, seconded by Counselor Schlecker, all in favor? Carried, that is unanimous. All in favor. Okay, council members, do you have any questions of the planner on this application? Counselor Hunt?
Do you have any previous information on this property that it was, that there was a conditional use on it from before or not? There wasn't an issue before?
Yeah, that's why we wrote it as remain. Oh, sorry, sorry, that's not the one. No. No, that's not the one, sorry.
So then there was a conditional use, because this was a contractor's yard for many, many, many years?
I have no further information.
Not the owner.
About it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Carlos Correa, would you like to speak to your application?
Uh, yes.
Could you come to the microphone, please, because it's recorded on YouTube? Thank you.
I could have set a microphone on there before, yeah. Or, yeah, just press the hold. Bye.
Um, yeah, we didn't know we were doing anything wrong with the property. What makes this conditional use is kind of new to us. So we're just trying to follow the rules that we're supposed to be doing here. We don't think we're doing anything out of the ordinary that was done before. As gentleman was saying, that it's been service like this for many, many years.
Was this the G T, uh, G T, that business called G T Excavating or G T something?
G T Holdings.
G T Holdings. Was this the property?
Uh, Dave Jones.
John signed in rather with G T Holdings.
So you indicate in your application that you plan to build a house?
Uh, in the future, that was a plan. Don't know for sure what we're doing with the house part.
If you build a house, are you taking down the shop from the compound and all that?
That wasn't a plan.
Oh, that would be, uh, there's two entrances onto the property.
There was a property, there was a house up there at one point. There was a dwelling there. But before we got there, it was, it's been ready to take it down.
Okay. And how long have you been at the property?
Oh, two years, no, three years.
Counselor Schlecker?
How many vehicles have you got on this property at given times?
Oh, it depends what we're, what we're repairing at the time. It could be anywhere from one, two, three, four, five, maybe more. Usually not that many.
If we put a cap on it, that wouldn't affect you?
Yeah, like, I would say maybe ten at the most, yeah. It wouldn't be, that would be a lot.
Thank you. Counselor Dorn Boss?
My question is, if you're only repairing personal vehicles, why would you need a conditional use? It's so different than me going in my shop and repairing my own vehicle.
Exactly.
That's what you, that's what you have here in the application, so.
Well, that's the question we're having also, because I don't run a business out of there. It's not like I, I'm accepting vehicles that come there to repair for other people. I don't understand why I'm here, could I now?
So what is the name of your business?
I don't run a business out of there. It's, it's myself.
Counselor Schlecker?
So, I apologize. I thought you were setting it up to be a little tiny repair shop.
No, no, not at all. No. We're not doing none of that.
What, you just fix family vehicles or?
Well, so it's my, I, my, we have like a kind hobby farm, so we fix our own vehicles. We fix our own, like, we have antique vehicles that we repair ourselves and kind of restore. And I also have a business, uh, other, that other property. And I might, like, fix a couple of odds and ends that are on the trucks. There, of my own stuff, but not, it's like my own things, not nothing to do with the public. It's not like we have a big sign, and we're open for, for business there.
Counselor Hunt?
Do you have a numbered company?
A numbered company, yes, I do.
Uh, can you explain to us of that numbered company?
Well, it's not a number, it's under my own name. Like a, create transport's my, my company.
My company, how many trucks does that have?
Um, eighteen.
Eighteen trucks?
Yeah.
And where do you service those eighteen trucks?
Um, in the south end of the city. I work for, for a big company. And that's the company that I work for.
So none of those eighteen trucks would ever show up on this property?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking for. Like, I, I service minor things to them. Like lights out or something like that, like repair wires, repair, like, anything that's small stuff.
So you're servicing a fleet of vehicles out of this building?
Uh, not really, just some of them. Just like my, like, emergency repairs that need to be done.
Any further questions? Hey, thank you. If there's more questions.
Sure.
Um, let the record show, we had all received, I believe, an email from, um, Matt Sundstrom in opposition. Are you, you haven't signed the sheet, so you have to be speaking.
You showed up late. You offered like the speed bill.
Okay, and what is your name?
Tyler.
For the record, your last name?
Hall, H A L.
Okay, and, um, no. Okay, so Matt, would you like to, uh, speak to the matter?
Yes, I would.
Would you come to the microphone, please?
Good evening, Councilman and Mayor. I do have some photographic evidence to support that the application being made by the applicant is not made in good faith. And there is significant commercial repairs that are being conducted at this facility. Can I approach?
Just sign that to Counselor Hunt, very clear in the past, and thank you.
I prepared a statement as well.
Please proceed.
The application for the property located at two fifty-three Hay Avenue claims that the garage is being used as a hobby garage or they're planning to do so for the repair of personal farm equipment, trucks, and antique vehicles. It further states that the garage operates between ten A M and seven P M, Monday to Friday with the occasional activity. This description is grossly inaccurate, misleading, and disingenuous at best. Contrary to the assertions made in the application, the garage is clearly not being used solely for personal or hobby-related purposes. The level and nature of activity observed at this location far exceed what would reasonably be considered a private hobby. There's consistent evidence suggesting that this garage is being operated as a commercial or industrial-level repair facility. You can see with the pictures I've provided, significant amount of work is being done on Cisco branded vehicles. Going to say, Cisco branded vehicles are frequently seen traveling on Hay Avenue and parked either in the lot or inside the garage at two fifty-three Hay Avenue. This alone strongly indicates that the garage services commercial vehicles, a direct contradiction to the applicant, applicant's claims. It is blatantly obvious that this is a commercial operation. The photographic evidence supplied here today further confirms and irrefutably disproves the narrative of personal hobby garage. As a resident of Hay Avenue for the past five years, I can attest that this garage has been persistent eyesore and disruption of the quality of life that rural living is supposed to provide. My vision of country living does not include frequent movement of large commercial vehicles along my gravel road. The noise pollution in this garage is a constant nuisance, often extending beyond the claimed operating hours, including weekend activity. There have been multiple Sundays where large banging, grinding, or pressure washing has significantly disrupted what should be a peaceful, quiet summer day outside. Additionally, the frequent travel of large trucks along gravel road is not only damaging to the road infrastructure, but also presents a serious safety concern, particularly for the many young children in our community who ride bikes and play near the roadway. I am strongly opposed to the approval of this application. Beyond the specific impacts to our neighborhood, granting this approval would set a dangerous precedent that any business, regardless of scale, may operate in St. Andrews simply by labeling itself a hobby. This loophole undermines our municipal zoning bylaws and then threatens the character of a rural community. The garage at two fifty-three Hay Avenue is being operated as a commercial repair facility in clear violation of St. Andrews bylaws. The application grossly misrepresents the actual use of the property. There is no reasonable justification for this council to approve this application. The correct course of action is to deny the request and require the commercial operation be located to a properly, appropriately zoned location. Under section one oh six one of the Planning Act, reject the application and enforce the bylaws that this commercial garage is in violation of. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, any more questions? Counselor Schlecker?
Thank you. Um, how many years did you live here?
Five.
And what was going on in here before you came?
As far as I understand, it was a Korean company, and they were also removed due to the bylaw zoning infractions.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Uh, when were these photos taken?
They were taken over the summer, uh, basically since August through to up till this week. Vehicles are, I mean, I pick up the kids from school, I'm driving down the road, and there's a Cisco truck in front of me. It's pulling in to get work done.
Counselor Hunt?
So the question I asked about whether there's a conditional use with that property already. There was a, a gravel snow contractor there for thirty years. He's the one that built that property.
Okay.
And ran like excavators and loaders and trucks in that property for over thirty years, probably.
Okay.
So.
So I mean, the still combined, it's still zone agricultural. That's, that's the thing. It's not commercial. So I mean, if it's going to be a commercial repair facility, it shouldn't be in, in agricultural residential area. That's, that's our, our stand on that. Whether it's, whether it's been there for thirty years or not, it ought not to be.
That's the purpose of a conditional use, is to put limits on it and conditions on it, so it can coexist with the, with the, with the community. And it sounds like he's doing his own private vehicles.
Well, that's the thing, is if it was in fact a hobby garage, we probably would be over there interested in the cars he was working on, because most of us are gearheads. That's not the case.
Counselor Mander, do you have any other question? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Hall?
Hello, good evening. So I am here as a resident directly affected by the commercial truck repair business at two fifty-three slash two fifty-seven Hay Avenue. So as Matt had stated, the occupant has an initial use to maintain and repair personal equipment, which obviously is not the case by the photos you've seen. The permit states the work is solely done by the two owners, but in the past, they've had multiple employees working at this location. So a couple of weeks ago, they even had a reefer contractor, so they have a contract for Cisco food trucks. They repair the refrigeration trucks, so reefer unit is what refrigerates it. They have had reefer techs working outside in the yard all day long, so outside contractors working on the reefer units. So the work they do in the shop goes from sunrise to sunset and even later. They work a lot of weekends, including Sundays. Um, this is where it all kind of began, like Matt said, Sunday morning in July, banging away all day long. And there's also trucks being picked up and dropped off at all hours of night, as you can see in that photo. There's even trucks midnight, one in the morning getting dropped off. I live in the direct vicinity. I consider the backup alarms going off wakes my children up. Um, when the trucks come and go, noise of the backup alarm wakes everybody up. So this portion of Hay, all the houses in direct vicinity are young families, including myself. So we're always walking the dogs and children up and down the roads, and then we have Cisco trucks coming and going. Um, there's no primary dwelling on this property, so even as a conditional use permit for a home-based industry, you need a primary residence. So I do believe this land was subdivided in the past before G T Holdings bought it. There is no residence on the property at all, just the shop. Um, under three point sixteen point two point two in the zoning bylaws, a home-based industry would not be allowed on the property due to not having a primary residence. And a home-based industry, according to your bylaws, small commercial business industry conducted primarily in an accessory building to one foundy dwelling by the residents, which is not the case here. Um, under section seven point three, there is a specific table for commercial property zoning and the allowed uses. Table fifteen of seven point three, a truck service and repair facility is only allowed in the zone areas of commercial highway. This property in question is owned restricted agriculture. So under your own zoning bylaws, there is only one area where you can have a commercial truck repair facility, and that is highway commercial, not restricted agriculture. The definition of a truck service and repair facility, this is all by R M of St. Andrews bylaw, means a building or premise used for the servicing or repair of trucks, examples semi-truck, dump truck, tow truck, transportation trailers, and/or buses outlined in V L four, three, five, seven. So the applicant, Correa Transport, also has registered with the province of Manitoba, his company under two fifty-seven Hay Avenue in the Manitoba, province of Manitoba Hazardous Waste Generation Registrations Program. So he does have part of his business registered under the hazardous waste program under the property on Hay Avenue. So the applicant would also, under section three point one, six point five, need to apply for a business license with the R M of St. Andrews prior to commencement of running this business at this property. So I strongly feel that this conditional use permit that is being applied for in no way, shape, or form represents the work being carried out. This is a full-time commercial truck repair facility, having a contract with Cisco food trucks. And I feel, as a resident, the dishonesty of this application is disrespectful and insulting to the residents that were here before he had bought this property, started running this business. For other residents on Gold Zone who got this applicate, or in the mail, with the zoning, if they didn't live on the road and you saw this application for a guy running a hobby shop, no big deal. You wouldn't oppose it. But if you actually knew what was going on, live in direct vicinity, there'd probably be more people speaking up about this. And under section one oh six one of the Planning Act, council should reject the application based on all the evidence provided. As well as section B states that it should have a conditional approval if, one, it is compatible with the general nature of the surrounding area, which it is not. Two, will not be detrimental to the health or general welfare of people living or working in the surrounding area or negatively affect other properties or potential development in the surrounding area, which it does. Three, is generally consistent with the applicable provisions of the Development Plan bylaw, the zoning bylaw, and any secondary plan bylaw. It does not meet any of these three requirements that Red River Planning set out for you guys to have a conditional approval. This property and business does not meet any of these. This business belongs in the commercial highway zone area, such as our newly expanded St. Andrews industrial park. Not on a residential road in the middle of a bunch of houses. So I'd say.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Correa, would you like to make comment on any of the concerns you have?
Um, a lot of that stuff is a lot of, we don't work late at night. We don't work on the weekends there. Like, I don't do, I'm, I'm usually home with my family. And like, and I don't run a business out of there. There's nothing. And I guess I did have a repair guy come there to do a reefer repair, but he was there just a few times. And if that's a problem, I, I, I don't have a problem not having stuff like. And yes, we did have, have some vehicles sitting outside, and then we cleaned everything up to make sure, so it's representable for the community. And we're very kind and courteous to how we drive vehicles up and down the road, you know? So, a lot of this stuff is not true. I'm not running a business out of there. And that's not, that's what, that's what I'm not, I'm asking.
Having a business, but, so.
I'm not asking to run a business.
Is your private business, do you own Cisco?
No, of course not, no.
So why is it all the Cisco vehicles?
That's my vehicles. If I have a vehicle that I have to do a small repair to, I bring it there to repair it there.
So you own all the Cisco?
No, no.
Semi-truck. Well, why Cisco all over the truck, written on the truck?
At the contract, so I'm contracted through them, and my vehicles have their deckling on it.
Oh, so you have eighteen trucks?
Yeah. It's, there's a lot more trucks than.
And they're all under the Cisco name?
Exactly. They're under their, 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 their authorization.
So you are running a business?
Not out of there, no. No, not out of there. I'm not running a business out.
Oh.
That's not, that's not what I'm asking for.
In your application here, it says that you, uh, it says nothing in regards to you repairing Cisco, uh, highway trucks. It says you're trying, you're going to repair farm equipment and maintenance of small repairs to our truck. maintenance of small repairs to our trucks, antique vehicles, small repairs as required. It has nothing to do with the the Cisco semi trucks that we see quite prevalent in our, in our presentation. I count, I don't know how many there are, fifteen, eighteen trucks right, right in that picture from August twenty twenty-five of this summer. I've got three, four, five Cisco trucks sitting, sitting, waiting to be serviced by, uh, by you or your, uh, you know, your repairman. To me, that is not a something that should be being conducted in a residential neighborhood.
And I agree.
And you know, and we, we have roads, um, that can't be, you know, subjected to this heavy truck traffic all the time.
But the roads aren't restricted. They're not.
We have a, we have a industrial area, especially for things like this that are, that is, uh, being undertaken all, you know, by the people that have purchased those lots. That's what that area is for. A repair facility in a residential area is, is not what we want.
I'm not asking to, for, to repair my vehicles there all the time.
Well, there's evidence here that that's what's going on. You can't deny that this is what's going on.
Can I see the?
You've got all these Cisco trucks being repaired in your, in your shop. We've got pictures from the Red River Planning right there. There's eighteen, there's fifteen semi trucks parked in that.
There's, we've, there, where's fifteen trucks? There's no way.
Well, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve that I can see right there. Not, not including the ones in the garage.
Those are, uh, trucks that I've bought and to sell. Those aren't Cisco trucks.
Okay.
Well, they're semi trucks. They're obviously not, uh, small trucks as you've got listed in your application here in your letter to off.
But I don't understand what the difference was when we bought the property off the present old, the old owners, they were doing repairs there on.
I have nothing, I don't know anything in regards to what was going on before. We're, all we're dealing with right now is what we have before.
That was right.
You have a company now that does your fleet maintenance?
Yes, yep.
And that's located in the city?
Yes, it's on, it's in, uh, Sa- Sa- West simple.
So they do all your fleet maintenance changes, major, major repairs?
Safe easiest, exactly.
Uh, Council.
Playing low.
Counselor Siker?
I think we've all answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, any further question? Okay. Um, okay. Mr. Hall, you one more comment?
Um, I just want to play an audio clip. This is from Sunday, July sixth, and hopefully we'll be here. So. This is what we are listening to at eight thirty in the morning, Sunday, July sixth, for about four hours. This is from my porch. I'm listening carefully, aren't I?
But that's, that's a, that's my partner working on this antique.
That wasn't an antique vehicle. You're working on a Cisco truck.
Okay, where's the picture?
Thank you. I think we've heard enough. Thank you. Okay, council members, any further questions? Okay, next item. Four point three point two, conditional use number forty-five, two oh two five, fifty-six, one, six, P T H number nine.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a conditional use application, CU forty-five, twenty twenty-five, located on two five three Hay Avenue. And the purpose of that application is to continue to operate a home industry, a car sales on a subject property. The applicant previously received conditional use approval on CU twenty-eight on twenty twenty-three, and this approval is set to expire on October tenth, twenty twenty-five. Whether before the applicant has applied for the same use again. As per zoning law of St. Andrews, the N R R residential's all home industry is a conditional as a car sales too. Here we can see a location map of the subject property and some site plan from the applicant and conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the R P D recommends the following conditions. This conditional use is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new conditional use approval. Applicant owner obtains all required permits from R R P D and municipality if required. Hours of operation shall be ten A M to seven P M. Exterior storage of the vehicle's equipment and materials associated with the home industry must be fully enclosed with a privacy fencing. And all signage shall be in accordance as per R M zoning by law. Also, vehicle parking associated with the home industry must be contained on site. Number of vehicles, vehicles on the site associated with the home industry shall be limited to maximum two. Only one vehicle should be permitted to be on the public display along the front or corner side yard property lines. Any fuel storage must be inspected and approved by St. Andrews Fire Department in compliance with all regulations. Applicant owner to obtain all annual business license from R M. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Do you have a planner? Hey, um.
Should I add, Madam Mayor, that we have no complaints, no issues, no nothing for that conditional use during the time that they have the previous one?
Okay, I do note on the record, there is a letter of opposition from a neighbor mayor. I don't know if Mr. Mayor here present. Okay, um, I just have here the first names, Dimitri or Maria. Did you want to speak to your application? Could you come to the microphone, please?
Oh, good evening to everyone. My name is Dimitri and, uh, I'm the owner of fifty-six sixteen, uh, House on Highway number nine. Well, good. So I'm here to apply for an extension for our conditional use application for car sales. My previous approval has expired and would like to continue operating under the same conditions that were previously approved. Since our original approval have fully complied with all R M requirements, I have successfully obtained car dealer license for the N P I. Uh, property has been well-minted. The site kept clean and organized and all operation guidelines have been followed. Uh, car sales business are small and low traffic, which is not my main sales I've been from. I'm self-employed, uh, tow truck driver. And this is the business car sale provides additional income, especially during the slower season. We have not caused any disturbance, parking issues or complaints from our neighbors. And we are committed to maintaining good relations with the community. Uh, if our extension is approved, I'll continue to follow all R M regulations and conditions. I'm not proposing any changes. Simply wish to continue operating as previous approved. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions for the applicant? That was a few questions.
Uh, what's the rotation of vehicles in and out, uh, average in a, in a year?
Oh, I sold two vehicles this year. That's it. Yeah.
I just have a question because we have received a letter of opposition.
Good.
It indicates that your parking vehicle is like on the R M property? Are you on the highway?
Uh, always on my property too, yeah.
Okay.
Always on my property.
I think we went through that last time he was here for conditional uses. It's in front of the tree line, but it's not.
Still not out of the board.
It's not R M original property. It's still inside your.
Yes, yes.
Thanks for clarifying. And just, since the last time you were here, I keep an eye on that and I, I would tend to pay that you've done a very good job.
Yeah, we're trying to do.
Counselor Darrell, boss?
Uh, that, uh, Ms. Mayor, they don't even live at that property if I'm not mistaken. So I think that's just a a lot that they're planning on having from what their letter says. I think she said that last time too. Uh, for future grandchildren or whatever. So no, no one, no one lives there, I don't think behind you, right?
They're older people. They show up maybe once or two times in the summer. In fact, they're good people. They're just older than me, yeah.
So they probably don't live there?
No, no, no.
That's right.
Yeah, I see a lot, a lot of coyotes in their property in years. So yeah, there is nobody there.
Is there a house on that?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, there's just nobody living there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further question? Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Next, conditional use number forty-nine, two oh two five, sixty-five, one eight, P T H number nine highway.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a conditional use application, CU forty-nine, twenty twenty-five, located on sixty by twenty, P T H nine. And the purpose of that application is to operate a recreation commercial business and this property is on A eighty Agriculture General. So as per zoning law of St. Andrews, A eighty Agriculture General, the recreation commercial is conditional use. Uh, and they proposing a hunting, hunted Halloween trail, um, plus a concession sales. And here we can see subject property air location map. Some site plan from the applicant with a proposed, um, site event and conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the R P D recommends the following conditions. This conditional use is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new conditional use approval. A applicant owner obtains all required permits from R R P D and municipality if required. Hours of operation shall be limited from ten A M to eleven P M. All signage must comply with requirements of R M zoning by law and vehicle parking associated with operation must be contained on site as per approved, approved site plan. Parking along P T H nine shall not be permitted. The venue must include sanitary disposal services, portable washrooms and cleaning stations. All concession sales might be, must comply with the provincial health regulations, including a valid food handling certificate. Applicants should provide adequate personnel and supervision during operating hours to ensure public safety. And applicant owner to obtain all annual business license from R M. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any question? Mike Ben, you're the applicant. Would you like to speak to your application?
Good evening. Everybody, um, we're gonna start after, uh, didn't come prepared with speeches like some. We're looking to do a seasonal event that I think will be good for the community and, uh, I have a, I run a, an electrical contracting business out of there, but it's not as if, uh, people visit there or anything to do with that. But that whole side of my property, approximately, it's empty land that was used, uh, by a previous owner of the property as a driving range. So we just decided to make use of the land and do some public community.
Need to grow some corn?
Yeah, well, not a problem though. We're gonna do a hay bale maze.
How much parking space do you have available?
Uh, approximately, I got some measurements there, but it can be expanded if need be, but I think about forty cars can park there right now.
Counselor, maybe quick.
Do you have any ideas to the amount of people you'd be expecting or?
This is a trial, trial run this year is the first time we tried to do anything like this, so.
That was right.
So once again, there was a conditional use for this property approved years ago when he applied for a driving range.
Okay.
You know, so same as a driving range, you don't know who's showing up and who's, you know, you have no idea on parking. So parking was in where the, where the, where the, where the building was. So like you say, you have lots of expansion for access for, for parking there.
Yes.
So, but again, I guess this is a change of use for this property. So the original conditional use wouldn't apply to this property because it's a different use.
Exactly.
So this is when you were talking about the well, yeah, that you thought there was conditional use on it, correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
It was about ten, twelve years ago when it was conditional use on this property, so. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Siker?
Um, I'm just reading the R P D part. So we want it for Halloween. I love Halloween for the age. Um, but Daniel says that you would like to keep them maintained for semi-year-round recreation use. What else do you think?
Well, I think it's permitted under the bylaw. Bylaws there that we can have like a farmer's market or something once every couple of weekends.
Oh, I think.
Might throw out a, like a skating rink or something in the wintertime with some Christmas trees and Christmas music. But.
Recreation.
That's just, that's just talk right now. We're, we are set up to do the Halloween thing right now. We're not set up to do anything this winter.
Okay, council members, do you have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Crescent, variation order number seventy dash two oh two five.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, this is a variance application via seventy twenty twenty-five, located on A sixteen Bayview Crescent. And the purpose of that application is to reduce the interior side yard setbacks, separation distance between accessory to principal building and to increase the individual and combined area for accessory structures in S R seasonal residential zone. As per zoning law of St. Andrews, interior side yard setback supposed to be five and they proposing one foot. Um, maximum individual unit area for the accessory, a building supposed to be twelve hundred square feet and they proposing two hundred, uh, twenty-four hundred and max combined floor area for the accessory building is supposed to be twelve hundred square feet and they proposing twenty-six hundred square feet. And separation distance uh, between accessory buildings and all projections from the principal building is supposed to be ten feet and they proposing six. So here we can see the subject, uh, property on their location map and some site plan from the applicant and conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the R P D recommends the following conditions. This variances is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval. Applicant owner obtains all required permits from us and R M if required. Applicant owner must provide Red River Planning District with a verification that two hundred square feet shed has been moved as indicated on the site plan prior to obtaining final inspection for the proposed garage. And applicant owner must obtain a permit for existing two hundred square feet shed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Just a quick question. Could you go back to that screen? If they're moving, why would they need a permit number four?
Um, the shed itself without permit.
Pardon?
The shed, it's without the permit. They have to move it because the setback is not.
So if it's there, why do they need another permit?
But it's not, the, the third condition is for the distance from the property line. And the fourth one is for the permit for the structure itself.
I'm sorry, I'm being here. No, but three applicant owner must provide Red River Planning a verification that the two hundred square foot shed has been moved as indicated on the site plan.
Yeah, because they provided the site plan with a different location that is not, the shed is not there for now.
So the shed is not existing on now?
Um, that's a good question. The proposed building, yeah, that's supposed to be here.
So there's no shed, two hundred square foot shed of the property?
No.
They will.
The, the application itself came from the, um, building department that they like applied for the permit and then we realized that there are some planning issues with it. So they need to comply to this zoning law first with all the setbacks, distances, and then they will have their permit for the proposed shed.
That was your head?
So the proposed size of the building is forty by sixty?
Yes.
For a total of twenty-four hundred square feet?
Correct.
Then the combined area is twenty-six hundred square feet for another two hundred square.
With the proposed building.
Wait just a moment, we'll hear from you in a bit.
So the footprint of the building is forty by sixty? For twenty-four hundred square feet, correct?
Yes, this is exactly what I, what I said, but, yeah.
Okay, any other questions of the planner? No. Okay, Andrew Hassick, you're the applicant. Would you like, could you come to the microphone to speak the application, please?
So this drawing is the first one that we submitted. We recently obtained the property just to the top, which is around roughly the same shape. And we since cleared the top and we want to build the shop where the proposed building is at the back, but we can't move the shed until we run the potential power line from the house bound to the shop. So that would be, that's why the shed is getting moved, to clarify that little. So that would be, that's why the shed is getting moved, to clarify that little mix up, because we couldn't move that until the shop would be built.
So the property you're talking about you're owning is the one that's outlined in yellow?
Yes, but we reapplied because we since bought the property above it, uh, which would be eighteen B view and we've combined them both into sixteen B view now. So there was a second drawing site plan that we've sent, but this would be the first one because we applied before we obtained the other property.
Anybody confused?
Do you have it here, maybe? The second one?
My wife made it.
Can you send it to my?
When you double the size of the property.
Yes.
Is what he did. Double the size of the property.
Or the little line above and the little line below.
No, 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 the whole thing.
Right up to the top of the whites.
So we've since sent in an updated site plan. I don't know why you have the old one. However, now, like Andrew said, how consolidated lots, they are combined. It's supposed to be updated. I spoke with someone at the R M. I'm sorry, I don't know who. Planning board and they said it should have been all updated for you, so.
Let me see that.
We now have a point six acre lot and we want to build the shop.
You mean all that? Oh, 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 sorry.
All the junk that is in the picture in the lot that we bought has since been there. We got rid of that within a week of owning it.
Let me just share it. So.
That looks like it's both properties.
Oh. So that one.
So that's.
All that.
Sixteen and fourteen that we now.
So that's the whole.
It has been officially consolidated into one lot now.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's all sixteen baby now.
Thank you, Brad. That was my friend.
Um, what do we need a twenty four hundred square foot garage for? I'm sorry.
We like our toys. We have three trucks, two sleds, we'll have two motorcycles. We store his father's motorcycle as well. And just kayaks, paddleboards. We live near the water, so we just likes things like that. Patio furniture, that's pretty much it. But we're very tidy, very minimal. We don't like things to be cluttered and crowded, so that's the whole point of it and. According to the bylaws, as far as we understand it, twelve hundred square feet is allowed. So now that we have the two lots, twenty four hundred fits. So we figured why not just do what we're allowed to do, the maximum. So.
Are are you planning on doing like any work and stuff like that in this shop or?
Only working on his own sled and bikes, that's it.
And I was by there, I see you have the signs now. You never got any concerns from residents walking by asking.
Fortunately, we have a very supportive bay and everybody's, you know, so.
You see that by the seat, they don't know what you're against.
Yeah, there's a lot of junk in the yard from the previous owner over the last thirty years whenever he inherited it. So I think most of the bay would be pretty excited for us to clear all the brush and all the pileup of stuff that's been there over the last thirty years since we got it.
Thank you.
Councilman Wonder?
I said one question and says here, uh, the interior side yard setback is supposed to be five feet, now it's one feet, one foot. Where would that be?
Sorry.
That's all for the shed. All of the variances are for the shed except for the square footage.
So you can't put the shed on the on the new lot?
This is all before we even had that lot.
Yeah, you're gonna move the shed though.
To the back.
It's basically gonna just turn into somewhere for our lawn chairs, somewhere for our bicycles. It's just kind of a refined shed now. It's just gonna be right beside the house. We don't have a sunroom. We don't really have anything like that in our house, so.
Okay, any further questions? If that's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to upload the new site plan to show it to you? Yeah, I haven't checked those. Lights, so you want? Or set.
Hey, while you're doing that, uh, Jerry Dick, uh, would you like to speak? It would be Kate senior in support.
Hi, my name is Jerry Dick. I live at twenty five Bayview, so adjacent to Land and Holly are in the Creekside. And so since he's purchased this other lot that's to the west of him. Uh, the debris and stuff that's there have been there since two eleven, it's been there for years. He's cleaned that all out. And when I'm in the backyard, or I call that the backs where the road versus being on the water. Every neighbor walks by with a dog or whatever, can't believe how incredible this yard looks to make it so nice and neat and tidy in our area. Now, the um, the people that have spoke opposition to it have been zero, which has been great, just to have a nice clean yard there. And he's talked to everybody around to say what he wants to do, even the fellow to the back to the north of him. Uh, where that shop would be his backyard, basically looking into the building, the garage. He's even said, oh, this is gonna be a nice view to see than versus what he's had before with a kind of rat infested shack. Was there for a long time and cleaned up the neighborhood, so we've got a lot of positive feedback from all the neighbors around. In all around even the whole bay to the other side, not just on our side. So I just wanted to make sure council was aware that locally here, even though nobody else came in. That certainly that's what we've been hearing and we're proud to have them in our neighborhood.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, any questions? Here's the map. The planner has on the screen. Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Next item, Southern Road. Um, variation order number one hundred two oh two five. Madam Planner, could you please proceed, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, I haven't went by the shape this month.
I have ninety seven.
Yeah, it's on the screen.
There you go. Variance order number ninety seven two oh two five, fifty four sixty eight P T H number nine.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So a variance application via ninety seven twenty twenty five located on fifty four sixty eight P T H nine. And the purpose of that application is to reduce the side yard setback for both principal dwelling and accessory structure. Increase the unit area, the two accessory structures and increase the combined floor area for accessory structure in our. Rural residential zone. As per zoning envelope of San Andrews, side is setback supposed to be fifteen, they proposing two point two. Feet, uh, side yard setback from accessory structure supposed to be five feet and they proposing zero point seven. Accessory unit area supposed to be twelve hundred square feet maximum, they proposing um. Three thousand fifteen square feet for the structure of the first one. And eighteen hundred square feet for the second one and combined floor area for all accessory structures. Is supposed to be twelve hundred square feet and they're proposing forty eight fifteen square feet. So here we can see our location map of the subject property. This is the same application that connected to the sub uh, the subdivision that been um today heard before. And conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the R P D recommends the following conditions. This variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval and it will come to owner obtains all required permits from us and R M if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Could you go back? Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? This is this non-publicary subdivision here first. So that's all on compliance, but now the bale maze where they wanna put nothing's in, that's why you need all the variance.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, the applicant left. Council members, do you have any questions in this? Councilor Hunt?
So once again, the shed is posing is thirty by sixty, which is eighteen hundred square feet. And what is your, what is he applying for then? Um. Okay, eighteen hundred square foot for the second structure. What is the footprint of the structure number one?
Yeah. So the square footage of first one is gonna be. Three zero one five square feet and the second one eighteen hundred square feet.
Well, I I understand that. The eighteen hundred square foot comes from the building is thirty by sixty.
Yeah.
Eighteen hundred square feet. Where does the um, structure one, what is the size of the footprint to get it to three thousand fifteen square feet?
That, that the structure.
Pardon me?
That's the, you can see it on the screen. That's the structure. That's not main dwelling, that's accessory structure. That's kind of irregular shape. That's why I couldn't just, you know, we're supposed to do the math here to.
That's the main dwelling?
No, that's the main dwelling. If I'm not mistaken, let me check myself again. Think applicant will can help us with it?
On.
Oh, he's not here.
Wait, go ahead, Councilor Derek, well.
Yeah.
So that other structure that's there that's existing at this point in time is actually, it's almost looks like a barn. Um, it's it's.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's that's the accessory one and that's the dwelling.
Behind his house, so. That's why I said it's March.
So it's like in the middle, one forty point nine feet. And so twenty five feet, all the blinds and drawings, that's all one building?
Yeah. Yeah, you can see it here on the detail B shop and one story house.
And these buildings are already on site?
Yeah.
Okay, existing?
Yeah, that's why they need a variance for.
It's an older looking building, but it's like, it's like a barnish, uh, old shop. I think it's two stories.
Okay. Okay, yes, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, council members, do you have any other questions? Okay, and the applicant says left. Next item is four point four point three variation order number one hundred twenty twenty five Southern Road. Madam Planner, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this is a variance application via one hundred twenty twenty five located on Southern Road. And the purpose of that application is to reduce the minimum site area for both the proposed and residual lot in A eighty agriculture general zone. As a part of the conditions for subdivision application S twenty five three one zero seven. So as per zoning envelope of San Andrews, minimum site area in A eighty zone supposed to be eighty acres and they proposing on lot number five. Um. On on proposed lot five acres and residual lot fifty eight point eighty nine acres big. Here we can see their location map for the subject property. And subdivision application map from the applicant with a proposed lot and residual one. Conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the R P D recommends the following standard conditions. This variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval and applicant owner obtains all required permits from R P D and R M if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions?
Just a comment. So this is one of the conditions of the subdivision approval?
Yeah, exactly.
So this is one of the conditions set forth when the subdivision was approved?
Mm hmm, exactly.
There's a satisfying at that now?
Yeah.
Mary Ann or sir, I can't read the names of the applicants. Do any of you, either of you wish to speak to the application?
I'm Tim.
Thank you, I can't read here.
Yes, Tim, southern. Uh, I just wanted to say, we just wanted to subdivide this piece of property for our son. He's looking for a house. He can't find one in the area and wants to be close to us, so this is the simplest thing to do for us.
So, council members, do you have any questions? Is this is A eighty though? Is this being subdivided twice?
Yes, this is the second subdivision on that lot, but the one that was before is ancient.
Yeah, we did that twenty years.
That's normally not allowed.
But subdivision been approved already, so.
Improved and approved at the planning board. I remember it coming from.
Yeah, but it would be the province because you can't, can only be one subdivision on A eighty.
It's done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Madison Cameron, would you wish to speak the application? Yes, I guess. Tyler, someone? Okay, thank you. No one else here for that. The next item is variation order number one oh one two oh two five. Ten Thurston, Ten Thurston Road. Madam Planner, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A variance application view hundred and one twenty twenty five located on Ten Thurston Road. And a purpose of that application is to increase the height for the accessory structure and increase the individual and combined unit area. For an accessory structure in S R seasonal residential zone. As per zoning envelope of San Andrews, the height of accessory structure is supposed to be fifteen feet maximum, they proposing twenty three. Accessory unit area is supposed to be twelve hundred square feet, they propose in seventeen eh ninety two square feet. And combined floor area is supposed to be twelve hundred square feet and they're proposing nineteen eh eighty four square feet. Here we can see our location map of the subject property and some site plan from the applicant. And elevation aim certain two. Those are the structures and conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the R P D recommends the following conditions. This variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval. Applicant owner obtains all required permits from us and province and municipality required. And applicant owner to remove the two temporarily car shelters at the time of the complaint. Completion of the proposed garage. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of the planner? Councilor Hunt?
So this is where it gets confusing about, so we talked about that other building that was forty by sixty, having a twenty four hundred square foot footprint. And this building is only twenty eight by thirty two, which is smaller than most two car garages. Yet it's at seventeen hundred ninety two square feet. And I understand there's a loft. But what does that have to do with square footage of the footprint though? Why does the planning board do this?
The twelve hundred, this is the maximum of combined floor.
Yeah, eight hundred ninety six if you go by the by the twenty eight by thirty two. Of the footprint of the building is twenty eight by thirty two, which is eight hundred ninety six square feet. Why does a a mezzanine or an upstairs, you buy a house, the basement doesn't count the square footage?
An accessory structure is all in it, so.
But it's deceiving to the public though, that they're believing that they're getting that someone is putting almost an eighteen hundred square foot building. On that property when the building is only actually the size of a two car garage.
Still, if it's gonna be any carports or um. An accessory structure excluded is all because it's already been with a poles on it. And it's not kind of house veranda or porch that we can actually use it as a definition of porch or veranda. Because this is an accessory structure, not the primarily dwelling. So that's.
I understand that, but then there's a cost, but the but the original square foot of the building is twenty eight by thirty two, which is only eight hundred ninety six square feet. Which is under the twelve hundred square feet. But because there's a second floor to it.
Yeah.
It adds square footage to it.
Mm hmm.
And is there an extra cost for that other variance?
Um, as an addition to the existing one, two hundred something.
Yeah, it's just deceiving when it goes out that this building, like I say, that's why I was asking you, what a forty by sixty square foot. Footprint is the square footage of the building. That's what public should be concerned with when they see a building of a certain size. That's what public should be concerned with when they see a building of a certain size. Where this building is smaller, smaller or as small as most two car garages is what is, what it is. So could we get a definition or clarification now from the planning board of why? Of why they do this, why they add the square footage of it being a mezzanine or?
Written in the zoning by law, which is going by that. Definition itself of any verandas portraits that you can exclude. It's only connected to the primary dwelling, not to.
Haven't changed the zoning by law in years, I don't know. This just started coming up a few years ago, this extra square footage.
You're right.
I don't know, right, so how, how does that? Okay.
I believe they're now following the bylaw, which is twenty five years old.
In a way, if we could get a definition from planning, that'd be appreciated. So we, we run into this problem all the time and I think it's just a fact of I don't wanna say the word money grab, but this is what it is because it's deceiving to the public of their thinking that they're, the person's putting up an eighteen hundred square foot garage. Which, you know, if that was the size of the footprint, it'd be thirty by sixty to get eighteen hundred square feet. Where in essence, it's only twenty eight by thirty two, so. Just a comment, thank you.
Next item, oh, I let the record show, we have three letters of support. Uh, Rick Ford, for you and the applicant, would you like to speak to the application?
Sure, thank you. Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, so we're proposing a building twenty eight by thirty two, uh, detached garage. I want to house our truck with plow, lawn and garden equipment. Uh, we got pond, tune trailers, boat, C do's uh, put in there. Uh, so this additional height and size of the proposed structure is necessary to safely accommodate recreational vehicles. And to maintain a roof pitch that complements the existing structures on our property, uh, it'll match our house. Uh, the proposed structure will not exceed the height of the home, will not obstruct the new light of privacy of the neighboring properties. It will be consistent with the style of accessory structures found on nearby properties. All my neighbors are aware, when I'm building, all the neighbors written support. Everyone that received the letter, uh, has supported it.
Council members, do you have any questions of the, council monitor?
I have a question. You told your neighbors that it's gonna be thirty feet tall? Three stories tall?
They have, they have, they've seen the plans. It's, it's not as tall as my house. And the neighboring properties uh, are higher than mine.
So your house is thirty, over thirty feet tall?
It's thirty two. You allow thirty five?
It's like a three star apartment building. Uh, yeah, that's the only thing I'm kinda concerned about because uh, you know, some of these garages that have been built recently are thirty feet tall and they're really impacting the neighbors, so um that's kind of my concern here.
Counselor Hunt?
And how, how much bush is around the property like there's a lot of bush around all three.
I have, we're half acres, majority is tree. And it's a twelve twelve pitch. That's what, that's where you get height from. Uh, my house is a twelve twelve pitch, attached garage is a twelve twelve pitch. The detached garage is the same width as the attached garage, it's identical. And all my neighbors have gone with a, a twelve twelve pitch. So it, it looks almost identical. Yeah, I'm not going up there. No.
Great, thank you. Next item. Uh, variation order number one oh three two oh two five. Yeah, one hundred fifty seven Morecki Road.
Yeah. So this is a variance application, view one hundred and two twenty twenty five on A fifty seven Morecki Road. And the purpose of that application is to reduce the minimum site area for the proposed lot five from four acres to two point ninety seven acres and the minimum side width for a proposed lot six from a hundred ninety eight feet to a hundred eighty two point four feet as a part of the conditions for the subdivision application S twenty five thirty one zero five in A R agriculture residential, uh, restricted zone. Here we can see the subject property, um, a location map. And I've allowed to myself to highlight here a little, so we're talking about only those two lots in that specific application, the width and the side area for each one of them. The subdivision that been improved uh, includes it all, all three lots and the variants that are needed. It's only here in those two. So, conditions of approval, should council wish to approve this application, the RPD recommends the following conditions. This variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval and applicant owner obtains all required permits from us, province and municipality if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? We have passed this subdivision. This is very.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a sheet that there's no one here to speak to the application. So the next item is variation order number one oh three two oh two five sixty three Morecki Road.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I just moment. I'm fifty seven Morecki. Is there someone that wants to speak to that? Are you, what are you at sixty three Morecki? We're doing that one now. Did you wish to speak to this application? This is on um.
Yes, yes, please, Your Honor.
Fifty seven Morecki Road.
It, it's all closed. My.
Yeah, we're talking about only the fifty seven for now?
Just have one quick thing to say.
Okay, what is your name, sir, for the record?
My name is Rafael Stopa.
Oh, okay, you signed a sheet. Are you wanting to speak on both properties?
Well, I don't wanna speak on his behalf, but there's a problem.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. We're dealing, we've got two uh, packages before us. One is for fifty seven Morecki, the next one is for sixty three Morecki.
So his is on thirty seven Amber Road. Which is the road that's getting built there and.
But we don't have. Oh, I see where Amber Road is up that corner.
Yes, yes, and they're all, but the problem is, my brother, he, he, he works in mining. So he can't be here, so he, he just asked me to just tell the court that the measurements are all wrong. Like the way they uh, the way they measured the properties is wrong. So somebody needs to check that.
But it all went to surveyors, like the subdivision was approved.
Yeah, it's wrong, it's wrong. And, and um, like, cause his uh, like where they put the, the survey posts at his fence, well, his fence is five feet back. So, like, they're basically taking his property. That's all I wanted to say. So this is all inaccurate.
What's in front of us is, is, is what we have to deal with, uh, uh. I'm not sure how you can support your allegations by just coming here and saying that it's inaccurate. Uh, you have to have a little bit more information than that or a surveyor certificate or uh, something else other than saying that it's inaccurate.
Did your brother contact the surveyor or the applicants?
Yes, and the neighbors. And, and, and he was very upset about like where they put the survey posts because it's inaccurate.
Well, okay, but we're not dealing with that.
No.
No.
No?
No.
If I could just speak to that, uh, uh. Originally, when the, the, the whole area was surveyed, uh, perhaps the surveying wasn't as good as it is now. Uh, but there again, that's another issue. That's, that's something that we really wouldn't address here.
Yeah. Okay, but thank you for letting us know. Okay, now we're moving to sixty three Morecki Road. Variation order number one oh three two oh three five.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it's so variance application view one hundred and three twenty twenty five located on sixty three Morecki Road. And the purpose of that application is to reduce the site area for the proposed lot number four from four acres to three point seventy seven acres as a part of the conditions with a conditionally approved subdivision S twenty five three one zero five in A R agriculture restricted zone. So it's the same subdivision, but one property above it. As we can see here on our location map and we're talking about only that lot number four. That's just a little bit less than it's supposed to be and should council wish to approve this application, the RPD recommends our two standard conditions, that variance is limited to what has been presented. Any other changes will require a new variance approval and applicant owner obtains all permits from RPD, province and municipality if required. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council member, do you have any comment or question in the plan? Wait, Peter Croker, you're present as the applicant. Is there anything you wish to say to add?
Well, not. I just, I, I'm Peter Craker and I, uh, I spoke last time already and I wanted to hear subdivision. But when I bought there, I bought fifty seven and sixty three. Both lots I bought and I got them surveyed at that time in nineteen seventy three, seventy, yeah, seventy three, I'm surveying. I just, I lost the name of the surveyor that did it. But the pins are right there now where they were then. So I don't know. Fifty seven, the lot apparently is smaller than what I, what the survey pins are that I paid for. And now it looks like the pins are where the surveyor that did the two lots when I bought the two properties, the pins are there now. And they're, if you look at Stopa's fence, actually they're, they're kind of running on fifty seven. So actually I told the neighbor too, he says you inherited a fence now. His fence is three inches on the, on this side. There, there, there was a, a conflict, uh, last time they said this previous, uh, surveyor. It's, uh, he's antique or something, then nobody knows about him. The time we're know that, uh, who the previous surveyors were. But anyway, the, the pins were all there. I, I paid for seven pins because I paid for the, the, the three, yeah, there's one, two, three at the back. And there's four at the front. Cause there's one goes right in the middle of fifty seven and the other one goes into the point. So there's three pins on that lot. Plus the other, and the, the four on my ear now. I paid for seven.
Keep, let it get, as Deputy Morecki said. We can't do anything about this at this hearing, like he'd have to go back to that neighbor.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought that was all, my, my pins were all erased. And I thought we were going by the new pins, which looked to me, looked there exactly where they were when I built, when I got them surveyed. But I haven't measured myself, I trust, I'm where the surveyors or whatever.
Well, you, you had a surveyor who put in this, put in the pins where the property is and that's.
Yeah, cause the, the pins look like they're exactly where they were when the surveyor, when I bought the two prop, two lots.
So thank you.
So. We're up to your mercy, you.
Okay, someone has their hand up at the back.
That's, uh, my son was talking about this, uh, soda room. I just. Yeah, we're living there for twenty five years. And every, every time the new owner, the buying the property, they always try to move our fence to, to the, our side, like my son said, it's not in the right. Because you know, uh, is two feet in our side, uh, in our property. That's, uh, other side is, uh, you know, like he can build the fence whatever he wants. But not destroying our, our fence. So the, like Mr. Cracker, he knows every owner who buy the property. He always said, that's not right, uh, uh, is not right, uh, done surveying. So, I don't know. It's not, uh, uh, now they put the, uh, stick in our our, our side property, that's not supposed to be, there's supposed to be two feet other side. I don't know who did this. Every time what they measure was different. I don't know what happened.
That's council, really, we can't do anything about that. You would have to go back to the surveyors. Between the two parties, do work it up between the surveyors.
Yeah, so that's what I wanna say, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, there's no one else to speak on that matter. That brings us to the close of the public hearings.
Madam Mayor, may I just correct myself about the V R one hundred and one? That we have the discussion about the porch and verandas on that proposed garage.
That's on, uh, ten Thurston Road.
Yeah, exactly. So the detached main floor is eight hundred ninety six square feet and detached garage loft above it, eight hundred ninety six feet. That's why they have, uh, seventeen hundred ninety two square feet, all of it. And we are excluded those verandas. So only because of the two floor, we have that issue here. You were right, it's kind of confusing because those verandas kind of enlarging it more than even that presented. But we have to show it all because it is there, like this is the, uh, the plan itself, it shows it very, very clearly and we're gonna count only the builded detached garage floor itself and the loft above it, not the verandas that on the both sides. Otherwise, it would be much bigger than that.
No, I understand that, but if it was the verandas, the lean twos, whatever you wanna call them, at least that would be still square foot of the building. But it's deceiving when you're building a, like a twenty four by thirty two building, which is the size of most cars' garages. When if you take the eighteen hundred square feet, it's like a thirty by sixty building.
Kind of, yeah, but still they have to show it, otherwise it's not correct according to the permit. They have to see it, everybody have to see it, so. That's why it's been.
You're saying about the plan, but the thing is the square footage is deceiving because that's not the footprint of the building.
We mentioned though, what exactly is in it, so, yeah, you can see it there.
No, but still, i- it's gotta be better out, a better reason, a better reasoning than just because why you do two floors.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, view resolved with the panel hereby close the public hearings for the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, final, uh, locations. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dory Ross, second of five. Counselor People Corn, all in favor? You none miss that is carried. I wonder, can we take a ten minute recess?
Very good.
Now, cause we, well, one was, which, we'll just be taking a ten minute break. Now, uh, two hours. I'd like to reconvene meeting at seven twelve P M. First item is resolution for decision for conditional use number forty four two oh two five. Where is the applicant owner of tax rule number five three four five zero has made application for conditional use number forty four two oh two five for the premises described as lot seven, plan two oh two two, two five three, Hay Avenue. The purpose is to continue to repair, maintain and our personal farm equipment, truck, and antique vehicles classified as any other agricultural use not listed in this table on the subject property. Now therefore, be it resolved that conditional use number four four two oh two five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, and they were all read out by the planner. Well, to put this on the table, could I have a mover please? Come on. Counselor Schlecker, seconder. Counselor Dornboss, discussion by council. Counselor Dornboss?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Sustrow and Mr. Hall for their, uh, homework and, and due diligence on this, um. And that's why I asked the question, why would you have to have a conditional use for your personal vehicle or personal stuff, um? And then we see the pictures of the, the Cisco stuff, and something just didn't make sense to me. So I appreciate what they had brought to the tables in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Merakki?
Um. I find this application, uh, very troubling, uh. I don't think some parties have been forthcoming and, uh, in this application, um. Uh, I definitely cannot support this application as it stands. Um. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by council members? Counselor Feeblecorn?
Uh, yes, I, I agree that the photos do, um, speak louder than what the application is, uh, has been put forward here in terms of the equipment, uh, being maintenance here. Um, that's look like it's beyond personal, um, equipment from, from what the, the photos and the explanation that was given by the, um, neighboring, uh, residents.
Yes, thank you. Um, any other comments by council members?
My other concern is the same. My other concern is it's not compatible with the area perhaps the last one was, but it's non factual info on the application for personal vehicles when it's clearly not all personal vehicle. So unless, I don't know, and I agree too, there's only, but it's not a home based business without a help sign.
So any other comments ready to vote? So it was moved by Counselor Schlecker, uh, seconded by Counselor Dornboss. All those in favor? All those opposed? So your application has been denied. That was unanimous. Next item. Resolution for decision for conditional use number forty five two oh two five. Where is the applicant owner of tax rule two oh eight seven two zero has made application for conditional use number forty five two oh two five for the premises described as lot two, plan one three one one two, five six one six, PTH number nine. The purpose is to continue to operate a home industry car sales on the subject property. The applicant previously received conditional use approval. This approval is set to expire on October tenth, twenty twenty five. Therefore, the applicant has re-applied for the same use. Therefore, be it resolved that conditional use number forty five two oh two five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, and the conditions were all uh, laid out by the planner, was also noted, there's never been any concern or complaint raised, uh, raised on the property. So could I have a mover please? Counselor Schlecker, seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn, any comments by council? Counselor Darnboss?
I drive by this, uh, establishment frequently. It's always clean. There's, uh, there's not a lot of cars that go through there. Lucky here's one or two in the yard at, at any great point in process. I have no problem with this.
Counselor Schlecker?
I just want to make sure that we, we don't have a timeframe on here. I didn't see a timeframe, like. I agree with the, Counselor Dornboss, I keep an eye on it too, and he's done a wonderful job.
Any other comments? Gail?
Just the volume of, of business here is, is, um, is pretty minimal. It's not a, a high volume of operations.
Good. All in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. And it's, the expiry date's taken off, so you don't have to come back for another condition. Item number four point eight, resolution for decision for conditional use for the nine two oh two five. Where is the applicant owner of tax rule number three oh five seven hundred has made application for conditional use number forty nine two oh two five for the premises described as lot one, plan four eight three five one, sixty five one eight, PTH number nine. To op, the purpose is to operate a recreation commercial business on the property zone eight eighty, agricultural general. Now therefore, be it resolved that conditional use number forty nine two oh two five by here, be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, and they were all laid out on the, um, screen and by the planner. So council, do you have any comments on the application? Counselor Darnboss?
Uh. I showed this to my wife. She was pretty excited about having something for Halloween in St. Andrews like this. And, uh, even though we don't have kids that do that anymore, but, uh, that land, it's nice to see that it's not being used for something else of what it is at this point in time. So perfectly fine, something like this.
Yeah, I have no concern. Any other comments by council? All right, it's a good idea. Good luck in your venture.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess I should get a mover. That one mover please. Counselor Dornboss, seconder. Counselor Hondor. All those in favor? That is unanimous. That is carried. Resolution for decision number seventy two oh two five. Where is the applicant owner of tax rule numbers five two one one eight zero and five two one one seven zero has made application for variation order number seventy two oh two five for the premises described as lots three and four, block two, plan nine five eight seven sixteen, Bayview Crescent. The purpose is to decrease the interior side yard setback to one foot and decrease separation distance between an accessory building and the principal building to six feet in order to allow for a two hundred square foot shed to remain on the subject property. The applicant also proposes to increase the maximum combined floor area for accessory buildings to twenty six hundred square feet and increase the maximum individual unit area for an accessory building to twenty four hundred square feet in order to allow for a garage to be constructed on the subject property. Therefore, be it resolved that variation order number seventy two oh two five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions. These were, uh, read out by the planner and on the screen. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Hunk, seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn. Any comments by council? Any hearings seen them? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. Next item, four point one zero, resolution for decision. Next item, four point one zero, resolution for decision for variation order ninety seven two oh two five. Whereas the applicant owner of tax rule number two seven nine hundred has made application for variation order number ninety seven two oh two five for the premises described as River Lot fifty nine plan three four oh four fifty four sixty eight P T H number nine. The purpose is to reduce side yard setback for both the principal dwelling and accessory structure, increase the unit area for two accessory structures, and increase the combined floor area for accessory structures in the rural residential zone. Therefore, be it resolved that variation order number ninety seven two oh two five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, and they are the two standard conditions read out by the planner. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Dornbos, seconder. Councillor Hunt, any comments by council? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. Item four point one one, resolution for decision for variation order number one hundred two oh two five. Whereas the applicant owner of tax rule number four three five six hundred has made application for variation order number one hundred two oh two five for the premises described as southeast twelve fifteen through east Sutherland Road. The purpose is to reduce the minimum site area for both the proposed and residual lots as part of the conditions for subdivision application S twenty five thirty one oh seven in the A eighty ag general zone. Therefore, be it resolved that variation order number one hundred two oh two five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, they are the two standard conditions read out by the planner and that were on the screen. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Mondor, seconder. Councillor Feeblecorn. Any comments by council? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. Resolution for decision for variation order number one oh one two oh two five. Whereas the applicant owner of tax rule number four three seven nine two zero has made application for variation order number one oh one two oh two five for the premises described as parcel C M V plan seven four one six two ten Thurston Road. The purpose is to increase the height for an accessory structure and increase the individual and combined unit area for an accessory structure in the S R seasonal residential zone. Now therefore be it resolved that variation order one oh one two oh two five be hereby approved by council with the following conditions, there are three conditions read out by the planner and shown on the screen. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Dornbos, seconded by councillor Hunt. Any comments by council? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. Resolution for decision one oh two two oh two five. Whereas the applicant owner of tax rule number two four two one nine zero has made application for variation order number one oh two two oh two five for the premises described as fifty seven Marecki Road. The purpose is to reduce the minimum site area for proposed lot five from four acres to two point nine seven acres and the minimum site width for proposed lot from a hundred ninety eight feet to a hundred and eighty two point four feet as part of the conditions for subdivision application S twenty five thirty one oh five in the A R restricted zone. Therefore, be it resolved that variation order number one oh two two oh two five be hereby approved by council with the following standard two conditions laid out by the planner. Could I have a mover please? Deputy Mayor Markey, seconder. Councillor Mondor. Any comments by councillor? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. Resolution for decision for variation order number one oh three two oh two five. Whereas the applicant owner of tax rule two four two one nine five has made application for variation order number one oh three two oh two five for the premises described as sixty three Marecki Road. The purpose is to reduce the site area for proposed lot four from four acres minimum to three point seven seven acres as part of the conditions within conditionally approved subdivision number S twenty five thirty one oh five. Therefore, be it resolved that variation order number one oh three two oh two five be hereby approved by council with the following two standard conditions outlined by the planner. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Mondor, seconded by councillor Feeblecorn. Any comments by council? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that is approved. Thank you, that's it for the planning. You're welcome to say if planning's over, if you wish to spend, that's fine. Leave it anytime, thank you.
Madam Mayor, do you need me for the zoning bylaw amendment? That's first reading. B L forty four twenty three. I have some slides prepared.
Okay.
If you need me, if not.
No, that's okay.
All good.
Next item is adoption minutes. Be resolved with council adopt in September twenty third, twenty twenty five, council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Mondor, seconded by councillor Feeblecorn. Any errors or omissions, amendments? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. We have no delegation bylaws and policies. Bylaw zoning bylaw amendment for the first reading. Madam Planner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, um, just shared my screen here. So, this is a zoning bylaw amendment application, first reading, B L forty four twenty three, located at McLean Road, and the purpose of that application is to rezon the subject property from R R rural residential to R A suburban residential. We can see here a relocation map, and as followed by that, the applicant also applied for the subdivision for this particular lot. I have advised him to rezon the property that will suit the following subdivision that he wants to do to do it properly. He applied for the rezoning to have those smaller lots that he proposing for the future subdivision. So for now, it's on R R, but they proposing to change it to R A to have that option to suggest smaller lots with the future subdivision, they actually will be kind of the same that you already have in the opposite side of McLean and Road, so. Um, our recommendation here, the general, the subject proposal appears to be consistent with the purpose of G D general development designation policies and rather than planning district development, however, more research in and offices are required. We will have to circulate it to the agencies and hear their comments and write a proper report for it. We still recommend that the freezing will be given to the bylaw, allowing the public hearing to be scheduled in our office to conduct the further research, including referring the application to commenting agencies. That's it. That's what I have here.
Can you go back to the map, please? So this is, um. River Road.
Yeah, so kind of similar lots to that one that already exist will be proposed along the street here, and he's been advised to do it properly through the rezoning and through the subdivision after the rezoning for the future public hearing, we're gonna represent the reports combined for the second and third reading, if that reading is gonna be approved with the subdivision. Uh, combined, and then you will see the whole picture as a rezoning plus the subdivision that goes with it.
Okay. Hey, well, this is the, where, councillor.
I have, I have a question or comment. Um, you comment on the width being the same, but you can clearly see the depth of the lots is not the same, so.
Oh, it's gonna be a little bit, it's kind of almost there with the, with the width and the size, it's gonna be a little bit wider, but kind of will be similar sizes.
Why could it be similar sizes on the, on the diagram? You can clearly see that it's half the size.
Kind of, yeah, but the pattern, pattern is already there, but still it will be.
So it's not gonna be as deep, it's half
No, it's not.
The original, the lots on the, on the north side or the south side, right? So saying that they're similarly sized, I think is a, is a huge stretch here. It might be similarly width wise, but depth wise and combined areas, half the size of those lots.
Hmm, I do not remember the exact size that they're proposing, but those lots that are in opposite, they're around, um, one acre, if I'm not mistaken.
Point five, point five of an acre, I believe.
Let me see.
Point five two of an acre, basically all the lots.
See.
And our bylaw states one point three acres right now.
Yeah.
I understand how, you know, the aesthetics might be similar if you were to look, but really the lot is woefully inadequate.
What are we not trying to do because like our zoning bylaws, they, this, the old door.
I thought we were doing, I thought we were redoing our bylaws.
Does it count or there sewer available?
I know, but why are we doing this now when we have, we've spent fifty thousand dollars set aside to do our zoning bylaw, and why aren't we waiting for that? Why aren't we, why aren't we having input from the public and all of us sitting at a table before this comes up on a council meeting for us to vote on? I, I think this is completely wrong.
Uh. Councillor Dornbos.
I, I agree with councillor Mondor, I thought it was kind of odd when I saw this come up, uh, to, to rezone it as suburban residential at this point in time, um, whether it's, um. What's the word I'm looking for? It's in the same area as that, the gated community, that self sustaining community, and then all of a sudden we get this coming up here as half acre size lots, and as councillor Mondor said, we're already spending money on updating our zoning bylaw, so why are we all of a sudden circumventing that, trying to get this through at first reading when we really don't have to? We could actually wait and see what they come up with, and then we can go back and say, hey, here's, here's what we're, we're looking at, maybe it's point seven, maybe it's point eight, maybe it's point nine, I don't know, but we don't have any idea, we're just trying to, you know, push this through, um, to get this bylaw change, zoning bylaw change, that's how I'm thinking about this.
Well, it's for first reading to get it on the table and contact all the appropriate agents.
Yeah.
Will be a public appearance to get feedback. It's only for first reading to get it on the table so the work can start.
I understand that, I do, I understand that completely.
Yes.
I just think it's, the coincidence is interesting, so.
Just, just for the record, so the front of the proposed subject property, we have lots zero point seventy eight to one acre. Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, they proposing, um.
One five two.
One five two? You've checked it? Okay.
What's the minimum square footage for suburban residential, is it fifteen thousand square feet?
Yeah. Thirty nine.
Point three?
Point thirty four.
Okay.
But they are proposing more than that, and, um.
They're proposing more than one. Like a third of an acre you're walking.
See, just, yeah, I'm gonna open this up here. Oh.
Your proposal is point five two of an acre.
So.
How much?
Point five two.
That's happening.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's zero five two for the lots, and the minimum that you have right now in front of zero point seventy eight to, up until one. Yeah.
One acre?
Yeah. Not more than that.
Okay. Not all the houses on the other side of the tree, correct?
Yeah, and that's already been served by low pressure sewer, and that's the, um, one of the conditions for that designation also to the sewer in the future.
Councillor Hunt.
So this, this survey was done in August at first, so it's not like it's just coming to us because of something else has been going on or passed, whatever, but this gets it onto the table. We know the lot sizes in the development plan aren't gonna stay at one and a half acre lots with sewer now, because that's ridiculous, and, so like I say, this is the first, first reading, and we'll see where it goes from there, so.
We're gonna have a public hearing for it because, yeah, it's huge.
Yeah. Okay, so be resolved that council give first reading to bylaw number four four two three being a bylaw to amend the armistice and the zoning bylaw four oh six six as presented. Could I have a mover please? Deputy Mayor Marecki, seconder. Councillor Hunt, all those in favor? Those opposed? May that matters, carried.
That's a recorded vote? I would like, I would like a recorded vote on that. Oh, totally taken.
Yeah. You have to ask for a recorded vote.
Wow.
It's on the tape. Very forty three, okay, that is approved. Um, thank you for your presentation. Item seven point two. Bylaw number four four two four, be resolved that council give first reading to bylaw at number four four two four being the boring bylaw for John Deere Grader as presented. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Schlecker, seconder. Councillor Mondor, who would like to speak to this for my opinion?
I, I'd like to speak to it, that was the one we prepared it, basically did up the boring bylaw because we decided that we were going to follow the funds for it rather than use operating funds. Um, I have gotten some rates from the Siamak Credit Union and also the T V Bank, kind of used a rate that would be representable for the monetization schedule, and compared it, so basically, basically the funds exactly is what we need for what the purchase price was.
Any questions by council? All those in favor? Unanimous, that is carried. Thank you, carried. Bylaw number four four one five organizational bylaw schedule amended, be resolved that council adopt schedule A of the organizational bylaw four four one five as amended. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Mondor, seconder. Councillor Feeblecorn.
Um, Lisa, are you speaking to this? Yeah, I'm just, it's just an update of the schedule, so we just need to do a by resolution, um, or pardon me of the chart, and it's just to do a bit of rearranging and the, the new employees that we've added as well, some title changes, so just really an update, there's nothing really different.
Councillor Schlecker, you have it all?
That was Shannon, my question, thank you.
Hey, all those in favor? Unanimous, that is carried. Item seven point four, tips policy, be resolved that council adopt policy G G S one four tax installment payment plan as amended. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Dornbos, seconder, Deputy Mayor Marecki. Um, would someone from that been like to speak to this?
Um, basically it's just updating the policy based on, we had selected the date of the fifteenth to be the, the date that we withdraw funds, also the fact that we are not gonna be able to put people on the tips program if they have any arrears, so wanted to make that clear in, in.
Councillor Mondor.
I just had a question, um, I don't live in the city of Winnipeg, but when I did, I, I believe I was on the tips program and correct me if I'm wrong, was, there might have been a, some sort of an incentive or a rebate? Would that be something that we could look at? I know we did, we did that in the past.
I don't think they say Winnipeg had any incentive now, no.
Didn't we have something like?
We didn't have that, but it was last council that disbanded it because when, yeah, you gotta just gonna be paid your taxes early, okay? But the cost of it, I think it was two hundred and eighty thousand we lost because when We lost because when the school worked, somebody doesn't pay their taxes. We don't get a discount from the school board, like we're collecting, like we have to put all the money upfront. We weren't getting any money back from that.
No, when you get three percent discount on your taxes, it's on the whole tax bill, so you're getting three percent on your school taxes too. Yet, but you have to pay them, we had to pay the full amount.
So it was actually costing us, I believe it was three hundred eighty.
And then we put it down to two percent and then.
It was nice.
I just had a question. Yeah, that's good for clarification.
Okay, so. Councillor Dornbas moved it, Deputy Mayor Morecki seconded, Carrie slanted, all those in favor? That is unanimous, that is Carrie. Check detailed report. Be resolved that council approved the October tenth twenty twenty five check detail report presented. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Fiebelkorn, second. Um, secondor, Councillor Slaker, any comments by council? All in favor, unanimous, that is Carrie. There you go.
Thanks.
Correspondents for action. Little Britain United Church lasagna supper and auction. Be a resolve that be authorized to attend Little Britain United Church's annual lasagna supper and auction. Being held October twenty fifth in Lockport. I believe it's at the hall. Um, we have donated a door prize in the past. Uh, for tickets. I have gone, my husband and I have gone once, another couple, we just paid on our own. So is anyone just in favor, we donated us on an auction prize? Lisa, do we need to uh then continue with the resolution or with this resolution table it for information?
Yeah, we'll table for information.
Thank you. Selker Biz Business Awards, be a resolve that council sponsor the customer service award, Nemo, three hundred dollars. For the Selker Business two oh two five Business Awards Night being held October twenty third in Selker. And that councillor Fiebelkorn should be also authorized to attend, because I believe we passed a resolution on this already. It's myself and councillor Fiebelkorn.
Oh yes, that's right. It must, it was last meeting.
No, we did a resolution on.
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
But we can, we can put councillor Fiebelkorn in there, so. Because the tickets have been ordered, because the tickets also. Uh, be authorized to attend. Could I have a mover? Oh, and everybody is fine with the three hundred, we did that last year. All those, I need a mover. Deputy Mayor Recky, secondor. Councillor Dornbas. All in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie. Selker Biz twenty twenty five sponsorship opportunities. Be resolved that council authorized sponsorship in the amount of. To Selker Business supported their twenty twenty five Business Awards Event held October twenty third in Selker. Um, it's quite expensive. I know we have never sponsored this. This is like twenty five hundred, fifteen hundred thousand. To this table for information.
Yep.
Oh, and so councils where we just found out. I was doing a bunch of emails back and forth, the new girl with the Selker Biz. Contacted Lisa and Sherri said, have we ever gotten an email to nominate somebody? They've never seen anything, I've never seen anything, so then I contacted the girl, she's looking, it's a big error on the part. Um, we were missed on the list for the nomination and the nomination was yesterday. So this year we're not, unfortunately not nominating this. Selker Lift Bridge, be a resolve that be authorized to participate in a virtual meeting regarding the Selker Lift Bridge over PR two oh four project. Which is being held the week of November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. With like two or ten. They have held these, we got noticed on this in spring, I think. It was at the Memorial Hall, I ended up, I was going, I ended up not going, apparently it was. The highways explaining it for, it was basically saying Clement's residents, it affects the most for those using the bridge. So is anybody interested in Zoom or we table for information?
Table.
John Q Board Tour Railway Site. Be resolved that councillor Slaker, councillor Hunt and deputy mayor Morecki. Be authorized to have attended the John Q Board Tour of the Railway Site held October third, twenty twenty five in Winnipeg. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Mondor. Seconded by councillor Slaker, all those in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie.
That's a good question. So on that Selker Biz, you'd mentioned the three hundred dollars. And that Selker Biz, the customer service and the business biz sponsorship they want is the same event?
No, then they want someone to sponsor, they want someone to sponsor all the other stuff. Yeah, it's the same event.
But you said three hundred dollars though, and that's on there too for a three hundred dollar gift bag. So.
Those were separate resolutions. We tabled the second one for information. The first one, we voted unanimously to spend three hundred dollars to sponsor the customer service.
Okay, okay.
It's two separate items.
Yeah, same, same awards.
Oh, same event, yeah. Uh, Gordon Howard, be resolved that Mayor Sewell be authorized to have attended the Gordon Howard Center's funding announcement event. By the Minister of Municipal and Organizational Relations, Honor of Glenn Smart, which was, was held. On October tenth in Selker. Could I have a mover please? Uh, Deputy Mayor Morecki, secondor. Councillor Mondor, all those in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie.
Anyway, maybe AMM.
To move back a little bit.
Nine point six.
Yep, nine seven.
Oh, because I don't have a resolution on there, okay? Um, there's no resolution attached to that, sorry.
Just, we wanna meet with ministers in our C M P.
Yeah, I don't know. We haven't in the past because we're close and usually for the, we're so close to the event, so Winnipeg, that's usually left for. The R M's that are up north that have to travel far, whatever. So the first one is about the meeting with ministers. Go ahead, councillor Slaker.
I think that we should try this out.
Which minister though?
Well, uh, I, I got two ahead in mind, with either uh Smart to municipal. Or the medical one in regards to EMS and ambulances and all that kind. I don't know, just thought.
I'd like to discuss with the environment minister. What's going on with the Red River? I think that would, that, that should be forefront in our minds. What's going on?
Well, the river runs through our area.
Yeah, the province of Manitoba has got the, you know, they're in charge of the. The rivers and the waters of Manitoba and the enjoyment.
A draft letter is being sent, we'll send it to all council first, I'm signing it tomorrow. A draft letter is being sent about City Winnipeg discontinuing that U V treatment of wastewater.
Um, isn't that what our water districts are for though? Would they be? Um, on our behalf?
Well, we could contact or uh, we could actually talk to uh Mr. Belonge, but. I think this is more important in our backyard. This is Saint Andrews is flowing right through Saint Andrews. We should be on board with Saint Clement, Saint Andrews, uh, you know, everybody, you can't tell me that that, uh, when I read this news articles. Supposedly this effluent and the impacts of what they're pouring in the river only goes three kilometers down river. That's ridiculous. Okay, I was fishing on the river on uh Friday, last Friday, and the whole time I'm fishing, I'm like, do I bring these fish all? For my family? Okay, like it, it, it crossed my mind, like uh. It shouldn't be crossing my mind because for forty years, forty five years, fifty years, me and my father have been fishing in the. For wall line in the fall, providing for our family. And now I have to question that? There's something wrong with this, so.
Well, yeah, I think there was no, um, like no notice, it was done so fast, number one. Number two, if there's not gonna have any effect on the river or the lake, why are they paying? I'm sure it's not cheap to do this, why have they been paying for U V treatment all these years? If, if, if it's not gonna.
And why are they doing it in the winter time? There's another reason for it as well, okay? The, the impact on the, you know, the birds, the fish, the, the animals are, are lessened. But you can't tell, they don't even want a dog or a, or a cat or, or a deer drinking the water on the river. Like that tells you something. Like this is, this is something that should be in the forefront of every single person in Manitoba. You know, and for years we've been trying to uh eliminate the algae blooms in Lake Winnipeg and whatnot, and now what are we doing? It's not good. I contacted the, the River Basin Commission to uh submit a letter as well and they're discussing it. I don't know why they have to discuss something like that, but. Um.
I know, it's terrible.
I'm fine with that, uh, Mayor Sewell, if, I, I'd like to talk to Minister Smart.
Well, we don't know if we're gonna get in.
Oh, I see.
You don't know.
Like, we've never done that, so let's give it a try.
Yeah, we've never done it.
Well, because normally it's, we can have access to ministers. Send them an email to get a meeting. It's usually for the people harder up there. That's why.
Yeah, makes sense, and it's very limited in time. You may get twenty minutes.
You're like, if you get twenty minutes, fifteen minutes.
Well, you can go the length, you only get twenty.
Well, at least they're gonna know.
Well, you'll need to be prepared. You just don't wanna walk in there, you need to, to prepare yourself and, and have documents uh of what you're going to ask. So we're going in to see Minister Smart, like, you know, we have access to him, like Mayor and I. Had a conversation with him on, on. Last week, yeah, but you, you wanna, you know, you, you've got, as. Councillor Hunt said, you have a short period of time, so you need to be focused on, on which your uh, your questions are gonna be.
Well, look at, look at the tourism that we have in our area, Saint Andrews alone with the Red River. It's immense. We have that, uh, even in the ice fishing, we have that ice fishing tournament or uh thing that we sponsor every year at, at Lockport. You know, that could be all impacted by uh what they're putting in the river. You know, I don't wanna get, I don't want kids to get sick or people to get sick when they come out to uh special events and participate in the R M Saint Andrews uh. Uh, recreation, you know, that, that's not gonna leave uh. That'll leave a lasting impression if people get sick from the river. They won't wanna live here.
There is an attached request form if you wanna meet with the minister.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I would just, that's an idea. We've never done it before, I, I hear other R M's doing it, so I just kind of.
So, so Mayor, why don't we do this? Why don't uh, uh, who's ever going to A M M? If they don't know how everybody's going. That they could submit to uh, uh, through Lisa, submit the minister he would like to meet and uh, the group can go meet them.
Yeah. And I think this is another opportunity for, you know, our Highway sixty seven, that the intersection, I think, you know, if we meet the minister face to face instead of sending a letter. There's, there yet, we're being proactive. We're not just sitting idly by with a letter.
So, so we can, if we can have that by the end of the week.
Now, why don't we fill out which ministers you want and fill out the form?
Yeah.
Thanks for the explanation.
Um, A M M Convention Meeting Request with our C M P. Again, we're very fortunate, we're someone who has the inspector lumber come here. I don't see any point in meeting with him at A M M.
It's a different, it's a different venue. We could still voice our concerns that we might have. It's another avenue of uh engagement.
Oh, well, okay, if there are those of you interested, if you can fill out the letter. Or. Okay, Gordon Howard Center. That was passed. Annual capital budget increase nine point nine. Whereas the vast majority of Manitoba municipalities are in dire need of the Manitoba Water Services Board Financial Professional. And or related subject matters expertise assistance for every aspect of water and wastewater projects and initiatives. And whereas the provincial economy, municipal residential and commercial growth. Community development opportunities, climate resiliency, public health. And convergent federal or provincial programs are at serious risk of being postponed, canceled or sub. Optimally advanced because the M W S B is critically over, un- oversubscribed. With projects that at current funding levels has a seriously compromised. Financial capability to complete even a fraction of the queued projects. Required to drive local prosperity, health, wealth, eh, health, safety and viability. Be resolved that the council of the R M Saint Andrews fully supports. At a median annual increase to the M W S B's capital budget. Beginning in twenty twenty six to one hundred million from its current twenty four million. Could I have a mover please? Councillor Dornbas, secondor. Councillor Mondor, any comments or questions by council? All those in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie. Our meeting November sixth. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the R meeting which is being held November sixth in the R M McDonald. Who would like to attend? Councillor Morecki. Councillor Fiebelkorn. Councillor Dornbas. I'm not evil. Okay, could I have a mover please? Councillor Slaker, seconded by councillor Mondor. So that's uh, councillor, actual Mayor Morecki, councillors Fiebelkorn and Dornbas. Um, all those in favor? Unanimous, that is Carrie. Okay. Well, that's down there. Okay, that's it. With that correspondence for information. And does anybody have any comments or uh questions about the information items? Councillor Slaker.
I just wanted to say, because the Gainer family library is on here, I'd just like to thank all the council that came out to the kickoff. And one day, we, in one evening, we made ten thousand five hundred dollars. Which the Gainer family has stepped up and on a to match for the, for three hundred thousand that it raised. So really that's like twenty one thousand dollars we made in one night, so thank you all very much for participating.
All unfinished business, curbside waste and recycling collection survey rela- results. And the R F D is attached. Does it mean anybody wish to speak to this? But we're not prepared, we're not going ahead with it, so. That's, we did the survey, um, there was to be a.
Well, I could speak to it. We, we've, uh, we did outreach, uh. Outreach to the public, we, we had uh significant participation from the public. Uh, a mail to, to every door, the survey was mailed to every door. Uh, we had about twenty five percent participation. Uh, so, so uh, uh, very good response and uh. And it's in, in the uh, report on, on where we're at and. Uh, our recommendation from, from the administration.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dornbas?
The only thing that I saw here was that um. When the council should formalize that no further efforts or funding should be put forward on this initiative, I think that's maybe uh too general and there may be. A tenured timeline on that, because there will be new people moving in, there'll be other people moving in. Um, hopefully, and then there'll be a, a different demographic and each group that is coming in too, so some of these people that didn't want it will be moving out or. Possibly getting older and uh. The, 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 just the, the change of uh the guard, if you wanna say, so not to say that we're never gonna look at this again. Seems to be.
Or it could be brought up, we need a resolution, it can be brought up at any time. Or it could be brought up, we need a resolution, it can be brought up at any time by anybody.
Okay, so I just, that's how I read everything else.
It could, it could be with the new council, uh, the next term, it could be anytime council wants to regenerate, if they could decide to do that. What we're doing is we're just saying, right now, uh uh, we went, we went to the residents of St. Andrews, and the results that we found were that uh, a good number of people didn't wanna move ahead with this. Uh, a lots of people in in the south had uh uh, had private garbage service that they were uh good with. Uh, we had from all areas of the community responses, so uh, we we formulated that uh, this isn't something that the people of St. Andrews are looking to move forward with right now. That's what the survey told us.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, new business. RFD Home Industries and Exterior Storage, can we? Um, I don't have a resolution attached. Oh, I'm sorry, I do, there's now. Whereas the RMR St. Andrews had issued a survey to residents to determine the interest of the overall community as well as specific higher density areas for curbside waste and recycling collection. And whereas the results of the survey clearly determined that the residents of the municipality did not support the implementation of curbside collection. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the RMR St. Andrews acknowledges the community survey results and will not proceed with any further investigation of curbside collection for the municipality at this time. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Morecky, seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn, all those in favor? That is unanimous, that is carried. Under new business. RFD Home Industries and Exterior Storage. Whereas the Council of the RMR St. Andrews has reviewed Sections three point one one and three point one six point three point twelve of the zoning bylaw number four oh six six regarding exterior storage for home industries. And whereas Section three point one six point three point one two currently prohibits all exterior storage for home industries even where measures such as fencing or landscape buffers mitigate visual impacts and comply with the municipality's unsightly property and derel- derelict vehicle bylaw four four one three. And whereas council recognized this, that this absolute prohibition may be unnecessarily restrictive particularly for home industries operating in accessory buildings. Now therefore, be it resolved that council requests Section three point one one and three point one six point three point one two be reviewed and amended in the interzoning bylaw to prevent exterior storage for home industries that meet the fencing and buffer requirements of Section three point one one. And be it further resolved that during the interim period, home industries complying with all fencing and buffer requirements of Section three point one one be permitted to maintain exterior storage without requiring a conditional use application. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Siker, seconder. Counselor Dornvoss, any comments or questions by council? Counselor Landor?
I said a comment. Isn't this kind of included in our development bylaw that we're going to be trying to implement and change? And again, I I think we're uh putting the cart before the horse here. Um is I I thought when we talked to the planning department uh many moons ago about some of these storage sheds and some of the storage buildings that are potentially might be erected, we would have some uh say. And I think this is taking away from potentially uh our viewpoints, if we were to pass this, amend and amend this.
Uh, Braden, would you have comments?
Yeah, I can speak to this. So Jordan and I have been working on this together. Uh, there's been increasing issues with uh, home-based businesses, uh, where red river planning is requiring uh, conditional use for the exterior storage, because as it's written in the bylaw, home industries do not allow for exterior storage, period. Notwithstanding all the other fencing language that's in the bylaw. So this memo, uh, if approved, essentially would allow exterior storage for home industries. Uh, provided they meet those fencing requirements. However, in all residential zones, it still requires a conditional use for the home industry as with the agricultural restricted zone. So this would only allow across the board A forty and A eighty zones to outright permit that exterior storage for the home industry. Um, that would be what we're dealing with. Again, we are looking at this for the zoning bylaw review. Um, right now with the consultant, we're looking at escalating tiers of home-based businesses, office within the main dwelling, outside of the dwelling with increasing, you know, planning uh applications being required. But we still have this to work with for the time being, and this would help circumvent some of those enforcement issues that we're seeing.
Me personally, I don't wanna see us amend this and then everybody get a fifty-three foot container and put it in their garden. And to me, that's an extreme eyesore and shouldn't be placed in uh in our residential areas.
However, again, that would still require a conditional use for the home industry piece. All home industries within the RRRA SR zones require conditional use. So it would be brought before council if they're gonna even propose that exterior storage. It would eliminate the need to obtain additional conditional use if they're in those zones for the fencing piece.
This this eliminates a bit of red tape. They'd be coming twice, right?
Yeah.
Then, does it also not um, help in the uh bylaw enforcement side of it as well?
Yeah, so we, not my department specifically, but bylaw enforcement receives the unsightly complaints, and a lot of these can be remedied with exterior storage uh, with privacy fencing or just fencing in general. However, when the planning district requires a conditional use, there's a bit of, um but which which should govern, right? And so we have it written in the bylaw that the bylaw governs. And so they require that conditional use, and we'd be looking to change that to reduce the need for that added approval.
Okay, more questions asked, all those in favor? Unanimous, that is carried. Municipal living policy. Be resolved that the Council of the RMR St. Andrews approved the surname permission to be added to the approved name list for future use at the St. Andrews Airport in memory of Grant Purnition, who is a longtime airport board member. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornvoss, seconder. Uh, Deputy Mayor Morecky. Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Unanimous, that is carried. Gainer Family Library. Whereas the Gainer Family Regional Library has proven to be more than a res- re- respiratory of books but a hub of learning connection, an opportunity for the residents of St. Andrews and surrounding region. And whereas the Gainer Family Regional Library offers essential services such as literacy programs, digital access, educational workshops, and safe spaces for youth and seniors alike. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the RMR St. Andrews supports the Gainer Family Library Expansion Project grant application to the twenty twenty five Manitoba Growth Renewal and Opportunities Program for municipalities. And further that the administration of the RM has submitted the regional grant application for the Gally- Gainer Family Regional Library li- expansion project on behalf of partner municipalities, the St. Clement's, Denauter, and the city of Selkirk. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornvoss, seconder. Counselor Siker, any comments or questions by council? All in favor?
I just wanted to add, so team, uh, Madam Mayor, so uh our, on the uh, the regional library board, Siker, uh, they put out a, they were looking for some help for a grant application. Uh, Counselor Siker approached me and and I said, it's kind of waited, they approached all the RMs who would help, nobody stepped forward. Uh, but St. Andrews did, and but but kudos to Lisa and uh, it mostly fell on her plate. And so she had to work with the library and and spent a considerable amount of time helping them with this application that had to come through uh our portal uh, with the province, so I just wanna acknowledge that uh that our deputy C O did a lot of work uh for the library on this and realizing how important it is to to this region.
Thank you, Lisa. Counselor Siker?
Also, um, at the kickoff the other night, I should, that you're there. Everyone on the board was ecstatic at St. Andrews and thanking us. So, on behalf of the whole board, we all thank you very much for what you do.
Okay, so thank you, Braden. So that's been approved unanimously. Petersfield Community Trail. Whereas the development of a community trail in Petersfield has been identified in the RMR St. Andrews Trail Master Plan. And whereas this initiative represents a meaningful investment in public safety, health, connectivity and sustainability in our region. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the RMR St. Andrews supports Petersfield Community Trail Grant Application to the twenty twenty five Manitoba Growth Renewal and Opportunities Program for municipalities. And further that council confirmed the municipal portion of a hundred and fifty thousand of the total cost be funded as per the twenty twenty five financial plan, should the grant application be successful. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Hunt, seconded. Counselor Dornvoss, any questions? Counselor Siker?
Did we put this money aside in the budget?
No, we're going for a grant.
We're going for a grant.
No, we already had part of it reserved, um, as well, because we received money from the Trails Manitoba. And um, we have to put up a certain amount of money for both um trails for mapping. So we have already in some money in the trails.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
I was just wondering how we came up with one fifty. How did we come up with that total? Or, or we have estimates on on class to be true, et cetera, so that's where the number comes from.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, that is carried.
And I just have something to to add that uh that lately St. Andrews has been getting a lot of kudos out in each uh, community about our trails and me, there were a few of us at a uh uh, a meeting last week, and it was brought up to probably seventy to a hundred people uh that uh, St. Andrews is doing a really good job with their trails, so it's being recognized in the province and and I'm even finding some uh uh, some people that weren't as positive on trails are starting to come around and say, you know, uh, starting to see people use these trails and that and and uh, so there's been some acknowledgement of of St. Andrews and what we're doing, so uh, you know, good for our brand and our reputation and good for the residents.
It was even brought up in final slides. It's in the book, and um, how when they interview like students and that, they feel a lot safer walking on the trails versus on the highway, parents feel better. They are their kids, so it is good. Hey, in camera, be it resolved the council of in camera at eight fourteen PM to discuss matters that are in preliminary stages in respect to which discussion in public could prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations as well as legal and personnel issues. And be it further resolved that the members of council agree to keep in confidence a matter that is discussed at a meeting that is closed to the public under section one fifty two three and that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed in a meeting of the council or of a committee conducted in public. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornvoss, seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. We are in camera.